Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting. Everybody look at the agenda so far. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Minutes for the February 16th, 2021 board meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, public hearing for maximum property tax dollars.
Most note in the public hearing.
Okay.
Any written comments? Oh, second. All in favor.
Aye. Okay. Well, opposed, same sign, motion carried. Okay, do we have any written or verbal comments? Not hearing any?
Kelly, would you want to give an explanation of what the purpose of this is and why we're doing this?
Why not? If it's your budget.
I asked just out of courtesy that if you wanted to do it. We used to have one public hearing on city, county, school budgets. And what happened was the legislature a couple of years ago determined that we needed to better inform the public of what we're doing. So we have to have this hearing here. This is not our budget hearing. This is our maximum levy. That means what we are looking at tonight and what's in the resolution, that's the most we can tax you. Now, after this hearing, we'll pass a resolution saying this is the most we can do. And that's the change the legislature made. This doesn't approve our budget, it just approves the maximum levy. Now, in two or three weeks, sometime before the end of March, we have to have our budget hearing. And when we go into that budget hearing, that's what we used to do. The state used to have a maximum levy, like for general operations of a county, it was $3.50 per thousand evaluation. In the rural area, it was $3.95 for each $1,000 valuation. That's how it used to be. So you were constrained. Now, the legislature basically did away with that and said, if you'll hold two hearings, we will let you exceed those limits if you have to. So we're letting the public know, here's the maximum we're going to levy. Now, if we were levying 2% or greater from the current year to next year, we have to have a two-thirds vote of the city council, the school board, or the board of supervisors. We have to have, they, we all have to have it if our budget is increasing by 2% or more. So ours is not, so we don't have to have a two-thirds vote, but with having three members, if we don't have two-thirds, it wouldn't pass anyway. So that's a short review of why we're doing this and we never had to do it, you know, in your past. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Resolution 14, 2021, max levy notice for FY 2021, 2022.
Move the resolution.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Carry. Okay. Okay, public hearing for Iowa Production LLC. Motion for open.
Second.
Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Paper and open. Any written or verbal comments?
I don't have any written.
Can I ask if someone would like to speak? Does anybody like to speak out here then?
I can give a quick overview of the project and the Jacob's family is behind us. They'll probably have a statement on the background of the operation. But what we have is a 4,960-head swine production site, and it's in Section 3 of Highland Township. It's modeled to produce about 1,267,000 gallons of manure a year. Right now, we have 825 acres in that manure plan with capacity of about 2.3 million gallons. So just about twice land capacity of what the site's scheduled to produce from a manure production perspective. It's a two-building site, building dimensions are 71 by 277. And they're configured in an east-west configuration. They sit on the east side of the road and they sit back off the road approximately 700 and 30 feet. Closest neighbors to this facility would be 1,885 feet to the south and 2,089 feet to the north. We have water 590 feet to the east, and all of those separation distances have been verified by an Iowa license surveyor. DNR was at the site visit this afternoon, said the manure management plan looked good and had no questions or reservations or issues with any of the site placement. Site has been reviewed for flood plains, harsh subsurface terrain, and in any and all public, public use areas, and met all those criteria.
Guys, I don't know if you want to talk about background of the operation and plan.
I'm happy to. I'll keep the group. I'm Katie Jacobs. This is my sister Laura Sullivan, and this is my husband Mark. And we have three kids here, and the reason why I brought the kids up is to show them this process, but also because they're, they are the reason why we're doing this project. Ultimately, the goal is to, if they're wanting to come back to the farm, have a place that they can come back to and, and the operation and the scales taken, that they have a place in the, on our family farm. So my dad, Tim McMahon, he is starting this project under Iowa Pork Productions, and eventually my sister and I will be owners. So as women in agriculture, we're excited for this opportunity to take part in it, and we appreciate you guys reviewing our project. We're looking forward to doing this in a, in a neighborly way, and, and also in a way that benefits our, our operation and the environment and the community, increasing tax base, providing opportunities for employees and workers. We appreciate you guys taking part in our data.
Thank you. Is, is this all going to be knifed in, newer stuff?
Right now, we've built a manure plan with injection or incorporation of the manure on the same date. In Iowa, it's still legal to broadcast on top, but there's a whole host of separation distances required when you do that. You know, you also expose yourself to the loss of quite a bit of the nitrogen through that process. And so it'd be, I can't imagine a situation that they won't be knifing in the manure. But broadcast application is still legal in Iowa primarily because of hay fields and those sort of applications where you don't want to tear up the sod.
I apologize too, I failed to introduce my brother-in-law Chris Sullivan.
No, those end walls, no they are.
As far as the injection of the manure, we, we've had our own site for four years, and we have purchased manure from neighbors who have had sites for going on 15 years, never once has it not been injected. It's always been injected.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that's, that's real good, yeah. Yeah. Okay. I think you'll find that as long as I've been around here, which has been with several supervisors, we've always supported the ag industry in Wapco County. And we hold this hearing not because we're required to, but to give you an opportunity to tell your story. Because when Kelly submits these to the state, and I think you said the deadline was March the 4th for her to submit the minutes, it gives you an opportunity to have your comments in instead of just negative comments that might be out there. So it's always worked well. Sometimes we've had to drive it to Des Moines the next day, that's how close the deadline was, but we've always made it. So I thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you for your guys' time and your support, you know, of, of this.
Okay. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, we're closed. When you got public hearing for fire alarm upgrade, motion to open public hearing.
Someone.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Written or verbal comments, Kelly?
I have no written.
Jury?
We started, the board started a couple of years ago, an upgrade of the fire safety system for the courthouse. And it was partly because it was overdue to do that, and the other part was we found that our fire escapes no longer would pass inspection. The way they pass inspection is you put 800 pounds of sand on there, and if they don't fall, you're okay. Well, we were afraid to put 800 pounds out there because they were pulling off the courthouse. It's an antiquated building. So we started the process and we're just now completing our sprinkler system, and it's tied into our old fire alarm system, which is just a bell that goes off. But what we're starting now, this is a public hearing on the new alarm system, which will have voices in it also, giving direction to people. Sometimes when you have an emergency like that, you, you aren't thinking really well, and you're looking for someone to tell you. Well, there will be voices that come on to tell them, you know, make sure you use the center stairway, it's the safest, and it's a $41,000 project. And when we do that, then the final step will be removing the fire escapes from the outside of the building. And this is a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and the engineer's estimate, which like I said, is 41,525.
Okay. Motion to close.
Someone.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign, close. Okay. Election system software, D5450 scanner, sales order agreement.
So this is, we're wanting to purchase this scanner for counting the absentee ballots. Right now, we individually hand feed each ballot into machines, just like if you're going to the polling place. This will allow us to set a stack of ballots in a scanner, and it will just run them through like we used to do on our central count before we got our precinct count machines. The total is 52,000. I did get a grant this year, I think it was like 18,000 in some odd dollars, so we would just have to pay the difference of that.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, acceptance of bids and approval of contract for bridge 206.
Skip number seven.
Oh, sorry. Okay, 2021 cancel checks issued for previous fiscal year.
Kelly, I see there's one big one on there. Has anyone talked to them personally about why that check wasn't cashed, that's sizable?
Well, we send letters to each one of the vendors and letting them know that we sent you a check on this day and it hasn't been cashed yet, and we didn't get any response back from them. So now we did not contact them other than the letter.
Okay. Okay.
Move the resolution.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Or 0.09 cents, I'll never get that.
Yeah, you'll never see it. Okay. Okay, now we have acceptance for bids and approval of contract for bridge 206, which is going to be called the Swanson Bridge. 176,697 dollars total. And the contractor is 108,000. And the steel we bought ourselves saved us a lot of money at 68,000.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Just make sure it's done before we give it to next year.
I think the completion date is September of next year, right before harvest.
Okay. Oppose. Same sign, motion carries. Order to EDA requesting release of agreement.
What this is, is that some people are not aware that the bio-processing training center out by Eddieville is owned by Wapco County. We raised the money for it, and we built it, we had to put a very small amount, I think in a $2 million building, we only had to put $10,000 of county money in it. And when we got an EDA grant to do that, you have to keep it as you intended, which was a training facility for 20 years. We partnered with Indian Hills and they used it as a training program for the bio industry, so students could so students could get a degree. Well, also Cargill and the entities over there, they used it as a training facility when they got new employees or a new product, they could bring them over. And in our facility, they could train those people. Well, after twenty years, which ended February the fifteenth, Indian Hills has decided that they can run their bio training as far as students go from their main campus. So after that twenty years, the building then reverts to Waplo County. Before we can really do anything with it, we need to send a letter to the department, the Federal Department of Economic Development, asking them to release us from our mortgage and from our agreement with them. And our agreement said for twenty years, this will be a training facility. A percentage of the floor space would have to be used for training. And in our conversations with them, they expect us to get a release within a couple of weeks because for twenty years, we have adhered to that. Now, there are some things we cannot use the building for. One is that we cannot use it for any full-time religious activity. To me, that means we could have a religious group rent a room for a day, but we could not make the facility a religious facility. And we can't carry on any activities there that would be against federal law such as discrimination. Other than that, it's really set up for a training facility. As soon as we get the release here, it will allow us to pursue some other action as far as training goes for that facility. And this is approval of the Board of Supervisors to ask the Economic Development Administration for permission to do that.
Move approval letter.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post same. Motion carries. Okay, personal changes. Change in appointment for Shelley, then Harto. Clerk one to clerk two in an attorney's office. So move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Carry. Okay, change in appointment for Sarah Glosser, part-time clerk in recorder's office.
We need to make one change on here, on that sheet. It was taking her to fourteen fifty. We have been paying the part-time people because they don't get any benefits. We're paying them fifteen dollars an hour. So we need to change that to fifteen.
I'd make motion to approve it as amended to fifteen an hour.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Alrighty. Do you have any other business? Bring the board.
Anyone have personal problems you want to discuss or anything like that?
I just probably want to hear some.
Okay, do you have a motion? So move.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Your adjourn.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you guys.